Welcome to the Goodyear City Council meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact the staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meeting stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call a regular meeting in order for October 28, 2024. Everybody mark present, except, nope, we got one. Going to need a motion to excuse Councilmember Campbell. She won't be here this tonight. Do I have a motion in a second? I got a motion in a second up on the board. Go ahead and open voting, please. Passes 6-0, all here. All right, thank you. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength, show us the way, and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember you love your love and grace, and be faithful in our service to you. Give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask that you keep safe all of our first responders serving here and abroad, and safe passage home for all those here in attendance. We ask that in your name. Amen. Now is the time for address the City Council on any non-agenda items.
Yes, Mayor.
What's that?
Yes, Mayor.
City of Goodyear, do we have any?
Yes, Mayor, we have Karen Kinney.
Karen, before you speak, you'll see a three-minute, you know, when the red thing goes off on there. Council can listen to comments and take any one of the following. Respond to criticism, request that the staff investigate and report on the matter, request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda, limited to three minutes. So, and again, it's just your name and whether you're a resident, that's all. You don't have to give an address.
Okay. My name is Karen Kinney, and I'm president of the Mobile Elementary School District Governing Board out in Mobile.
I thought you looked familiar. We've met before.
Yes. On behalf of the governing board, superintendent, staff, and students at Mobile Elementary School, I would like to thank the city of Goodyear for securing funds for the security fence at Mobile Elementary School and the donation of school supplies and backpacks from Wally Campbell. However, as an educator and board member, I was appalled when on July 10, 2024, Wally Campbell came out to the school and made defamatory statements to the superintendent and school staff such as, "We did not want this school on the, or this land. We didn't ask for it. The school was supposed to be closed after Dr. Kit Wood retired. You shouldn't be open. We already paid $5 million for police and fire. For what, 22 people? We never asked for this, and you're not getting anything from us. Community members do not pay taxes, just large landowners." Since that time, on July incident, various members of the City Council personally called to apologize to Terry Dominguez, the school superintendent. In addition, a letter of apology was sent to the parties involved by Wally. We do not believe the apology to be sincere based on her voting record in supporting the community. She should apologize to the community and the community liaison, Dennis Hudson, for the insults made about the community members of not paying taxes. Thank you.
I know she wrote the apology, and for whatever it's worth, I know I believe she was sincere in that, so I'll just let it go at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got any others?
Yes, sir. Dennis Hudson.
Dennis?
Yeah, she's a rookie, but anyway. How you doing? Dennis Hudson from Mobile. Hello, everybody. Just want to update everybody concerning what's been going on in the community. Met with Wynette Friday, and she updated us on our price. We talked about the annexation and the road improvements and private road and what that meant. Learned some pretty good things, and also want to thank her for coming out to the community, William and the rest of the staff to support us and to talk about what the plans are and what initially, what's going on. We found out about the private roads, from what I understand, that the private roads are supposed to be the responsibility of the county supervisor, the county to create those roads, but they haven't done it up to this point. I've contacted the county, Galardo. They haven't got back to me concerning monies that are supposed to go to the community and any other thing, because I went to the supervisors' meeting, I've called them, and they haven't gotten back to me. So I'm a little bit disappointed in that. Also, I'd like to, Sherri, I saw when you talked about the homeless, I appreciate that because regardless of what people think, you know, by the grace of God, we're not there because any little thing mentally or physically happened to us, and we're out there as well. Laura, thank you for contacting the, contacting the, the Soul EDF. They've met with us concerning the project, and they were saying how much money they would give to the community. And I expressed to them at that time that even though it's several million dollars, that that money because of what the county has done up to this point with the money that we're supposed to have from them through waste management as a donation to the community, they haven't met, they haven't kept that commitment, so we're not happy about that, and we don't, we can't trust them. So, and a lot of the community people are not too happy about that. So, I'd like to thank Vicki for the, for the fire department pushing that because they've come out to the food bank, they've actually helped out with that. And, and I expressed to Karen and the school that they should allow the school to come, allow the fire department to come and be able to watch their vehicles and do some stuff there. Because unfortunately, the county, they were getting water from the school, but the county cut it off again. That's back to the county, and why that wasn't taken care of, that they should be supplying water to the fire department because there are source out there. And so that's not happening, and that's pretty pathetic. So again, I want to thank everybody for supporting us and for the things that are, that are, that are happening. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, you're welcome.
Any others?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thanks for the update. All right, will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items one through six by title only?
Number one, approval of minutes. Number two, approved budget amendments and related expenditure authority. Number three, authorize the expenditure of construction funds up to $1,396,700 for CIP Project 42061 Traffic Signal, 152nd Avenue and Van Buren Street. Number four, adopt Resolution Number 2024-2428 declaring sections of El Cielo unnecessary for public roadway vacating such sections of El Cielo, authorizing the termination of public utility easements adjacent to the section of El Cielo being vacated, providing for the recordation of the resolution and providing for an effective date of the abandonment and the resolution. Adopt Resolution Number 2024-2429 declaring sections of South 143rd Avenue unnecessary for public roadway vacating such sections of South 143rd Avenue, authorizing the termination of public utility easements adjacent to the section of South 143rd Avenue being vacated, providing for the recordation of the resolution and providing for effective dates of the abandonment and the resolution. Number six, conditionally approve the final plat of ascent at Canyon Trail, subject to stipulations.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council wish to remove an item? Seeing none, can I get a motion in a second? I got a motion in a second up there. With that, can we go ahead and open it up? Voting? Passes 6-0. Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight, where you'll consider a use permit for a drive-through restaurant. We go ahead and open the public hearing. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Ann Dolmage, Principal Planner. And this is a request for a use permit for a new Panda Express drive-through restaurant in central Goodyear. The project site is 1.2 acres within Cotton Flower Marketplace. It's at the north end of the center, just west of Black Rock Coffee and north of Esporta Fitness. The zoning of the site is planned area development, and it allows general commercial or C2 uses. Drive-through restaurants do require a use permit when any portion of a drive-through lane is within 500 feet of a residential district. And in this case, the proposed use will have lanes within 500 feet of homes in the Cotton Flower single-family residential development. Cotton Flower Marketplace has two driveway entrances from Yuma Road, shown here with the green arrows. The west or left entrance is full access. The east or right entrance is right in, right out only. There's also two driveway entrances on Cotton Lane, not pictured here. The drive-through entrance into Panda Express is shown with a blue arrow, and the drive-through exit is shown with a red arrow. There are two drive-through lanes merging into one lane between the menu boards and the pickup window, and there's capacity for 16 vehicles. And there will also be dine-in eating as well, and there's 41 parking spaces and four bicycle spaces for staff and dine-in customers. And ADOT is planning an extension of Loop 303 from Van Buren Street to MC85, eventually linking to State Route 30 when that's built. This will involve changes to Yuma Road, including closure of the eastern driveway into Cotton Flower Marketplace, as shown here. The west driveway will remain. ADOT envisions this as a three-quarter access driveway with no left-out. It'll be right in, right out, left in only. There will also be one driveway closing on Cotton Lane, and one will remain open, which will connect to a new southbound frontage road along the 303 extension. Panda Express will most likely be built before all of these extension improvements are complete. They're expected to start, the extension is expected to start in early 2025 and take about three years to finish. And ADOT has completed an aesthetic study for the design of the 303 extension, and shown here is the proposed design for the Yuma Road overpass. We don't know the exact height, but the height of the Panda Express restaurant is supposed to be about 23 feet, and we do expect this will be substantially taller. And there will be sound walls along most of the west side of the Loop 303 extension. And for reference, here's a photo of the existing Van Buren overpass. A master site plan was approved for Cotton Flower Marketplace in 2008, and the design of the proposed drive-through is consistent with the design guidelines that were approved as part of that site plan. It will incorporate a neutral color palette and a variety of building materials, including stucco, stone veneer, and split-phase block. And there is a comprehensive sign package for this center, which Panda Express will need to conform with when they come in with their sign plan permits. And here are some photos of existing buildings within the center. We have Esporta Fitness, as well as Black Rock and Salad and Go. The project satisfies criteria for use permits, convenience uses, and drive-through restaurants. Traffic impacts have been reviewed, and the project will conform with street capacity and street improvements. The project meets standards for vehicle queuing in the drive-through, for parking, and for screening. We have stipulations which address potential nuisances like vehicle backups into fire lanes or public streets, as well as speaker noise from the drive-through speaker. And finally, the project is compatible with other commercial uses in the area, which you can see here in yellow, and Cotton Flower Marketplace is in red. All required public notifications for this hearing have been completed, including postcards to neighbors, a legal ad in the paper, and a sign posting on the property. There was a neighborhood meeting on March 20, and no members of the public came to speak about the project. And it also went to Planning and Zoning Commission on October 16. And Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the project. So staff does recommend approval, subject to the proposed stipulations. And I don't believe that the applicant could be here tonight, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Will the council please enter a motion in a second to approve the request for a use permit for a convenience use of drive-through restaurant within 500 feet of a residential zoning district on approximately 1.2 acres, a parcel located at the southwest corner of Yuma Road and Cotton Lane, proposed Loop 303 Zone Plan Area Development, PAD, subject to stipulations? Do I see a motion in a second? I see a motion in a second. Go ahead and open up. Anybody like to speak? See Councilmember Stip first up.
Ann, thanks for the presentation. Very, very thorough. Appreciate that. I don't really have any questions necessarily about this particular project, but you raised a bunch of really good points about what, now that ADOT is starting to kind of unveil what's happening in that particular area. I would just like to request that we get an update from the staff of what does that look like? From, from ADOT, just, we have made so many zoning choices based on what we thought were happening in that area. We're pretty close to maintaining, I think, what we've all envisioned, but now that it's starting to unveil itself, I think, I think this council and the future council probably would benefit from seeing what, what's going to close, what's going to stay open, how that's all going to work. I think, obviously, with the caveat that it's not done until it's done. I hate to sound like Yogi Berra, but it's not over until it's over. But I think giving us some, a heads up on that would be very, very beneficial, but I have no questions on this. You did a great job.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, can you go back to the, the aerial of the driveway in and out? Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. I think this will do well there. The pandas are always packed, at least the one off Ostraya is near my office. So, when you go to the next slide where it says, so the, that one's going to be permanently closed. So there's the one, the green ones are right in, right out. So is there a, just this plaza, how to get in and out of this plaza? So can I, is the only way to get, I know there's southern exits there. Can I get in and out? Can I take a left-hand turn? Is there an underpass, or how can I get, if I wanted to go west?
Yes, Mayor Pazillo and Councilmember Hampton. Are you referring to after the ADOT improvements are complete?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, ADOT envisions that green driveway to be three-quarter access only, so you wouldn't be able to turn left out. So people who want to go west on Yuma would need to turn right. I don't believe they would be able to make a U-turn in the turn lane that gets you onto the freeway. So they may need to go down to the two turn lanes that would go into Canyon, Canyon Trails Town Center and make a U-turn there.
And then there's more access points south, but I know the 303 is going to go through there.
Yes.
Elevated, is there going to be like a, to get to the frontage road?
Yes, so from, there's two driveways now onto Cotton, one of them will be closed. For the one that's going to remain open, it will connect, there'll be a new southbound frontage road alongside 303, and it will connect to that frontage road, so it'll be right in, right out only.
Okay, so you gotta go, sort of go north that wall. So if you go up that exit, you have to go all the way down to Lower Buckeye and take a U-turn there to head back up.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Potentially that way, too. Okay, that's going to be a hard, hard intersection there because I know, I know in this particular situation, a lot of these people along, along Cerebral, they'll go through the turn lane to, to make a left-hand, to make, to go westbound, or whatever the version of that is there. So, yeah, that's hard to, yeah, I just, I hope that things keep developing in that plaza there. So, so, okay. No, I appreciate it, just kind of something to how this is going to feel with the ADOT coming through and how it's going to affect the rest of the, that shopping center as well. So, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
Hit it again.
Oh, I got it. Okay. What Councilmember Hampton said, that's what I was kind of thinking about. So I think what Councilmember Stip said is really going to help me when we get the full on, because it looks like this might be very difficult for people in certain areas to go to this entire parcel. You said this was still developing, though, on how it is, or are they going to talk to the city more about this at all? Or get our input at all?
Yes, Mayor Pazillo and Councilmember Loretano. That is a good question. I, I believe the planning is still ongoing with ADOT, and we can, we can always get in touch with them and ask them to keep us apprised of things as they progress.
Yeah, because having them both right in, right out, I can see envision going west would be almost impossible, and we don't want everyone swinging you east because that's more dangerous. So, yeah, please just keep us updated, and I look forward to getting the update from what Councilmember Stip because I think that would help me visualize more what we've got going on here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are we good?
Again? Just, it's, short of anything else, I'm just going to say it's a dream to think we're going to be able to change ADOT's opinion at this point. So we have to just be prepared for, for what is going to come. If you just look at distances from where Cotton Lane is to, I've got the map here, that's why I keep pointing at this. Cotton Lane in Yuma and this whole shopping center, there's just not enough distance between Cotton and Yuma and these entrances to allow for those turns. It's just not within ADOT's design guideline for that to occur, which is why I think it's really important for us to understand kind of globally how this is going to go, particularly for what's going to happen on the east side of the street, and then how it may or may not affect the remaining parcel or two that's left on the northeast corner of Cotton and Yuma as well.
Okay, thank you. With that, you go ahead and open it up. Vote? Passes 6-0. Thank you. We have two items on business. Would I like to remind council, wait for a motion in a second before discussion? First item, we consider it's a traffic signal camera operations and recording policy. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve Centos, City Engineer. And tonight, I'm requesting approval of a new traffic camera recording policy. Some quick background on the policy. On May 13th of this year, we had a work session on traffic camera recording. The work session also included a discussion on license plate recording and real-time crime center. These are three separate and distinct topics, however, there is some overlap. Also, we did have a, we do have a budget in this fiscal year to implement this project, but we committed to council to come back and have a discussion and get approval on the policy before moving forward with that project. So, the policy is in alignment with our strategic plan under the category of infrastructure. Specifically, it's to identify legally acceptable best practices for recording traffic cameras, working in partnership with our city manager's office, city attorney's office, police department. We've put together a policy to meet that goal. So let's go look at some of the key features of the policy. The main intent is that it regulates the operation and recording of traffic camera footage. There are three distinct areas in the policy. The first of which is access, which is restricted primarily to authorized engineering personnel. However, there is a mechanism for the police department to access the footage for the uses specified. So for the allowed uses, council may recall from the work session back in May of this year, they focused primarily on traffic operations and also include police investigations. We can use them to investigate traffic incidents, complaints, damage to equipment, and also for training and educational purposes. Finally, it discusses the retention requirements. And for this section, we did research various other cities, found a range of information. Some don't, some don't record at all, some don't keep the footage, and then others have varying timeframes up to 14 days. After reviewing, after reviewing the other policies and working with legal, we decided to point directly to the state retention guidelines, which currently states 14 days minimum. This is the time it would also be available for public records request. So just to point out, we point directly to the guidelines that we don't have to update the policy if the state updates their guidelines. And one other item of note, if, if the police department does pull the footage, the minimum retention requirements do change to at least 16, or I'm sorry, six months. So for project implementation, should council approve this policy, we would move forward with the project in partnership with IT. Project implementation, like I mentioned, is funded in this current fiscal year, and it covers the software and hardware needed to store the footage. As a reminder, we already have the traffic cameras in place, so we don't need to purchase additional cameras. For the implementation schedule, we would plan to start next month and complete by the end of the fiscal year. So again, the recommendation tonight is adopt the proposed traffic signal camera operation recording policy, and now I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion in a second here? I've got a motion in a second up here. Let's open for council discussion. Did I miss something? I'm good. No speaker cards? All right, first one up, Councilmember Gillis.
Okay, so these were the things I was interested in, the traffic cameras. How many hours will they record initially? Because we're paying for that, for 48, 72 hours. We were told that really we shouldn't do more than 72 hours, so I want to know how long they're going to do it.
Great question. Mayor Pazillo, Councilmember Gillis. We adjusted the timeframes based on the minimum requirements from the state retention guidelines, so we'll have them for 14 days.
14 days?
Yes.
What are we paying for that?
The budget amount is $300,000. That provides us the software and the hardware to implement the project for 14 days for every camera.
Right, and is that per year?
No, that's not, that's the upfront cost, and I believe it's a three-year, I believe it's a three-year subscription.
So the $300,000 will go for the three years. Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Stip?
All right, Steve. So let's, so while we don't say in the policy that we're going to retain it for 14 days, the current, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, the current state guideline for retention of this type of footage is 14 days, is that?
Yes, that's our understanding.
Okay. So I recall during the conversations that we had back and forth, as this thing got, I'm going to say convoluted, and that may not be the best choice of words, but as it got confused and whatnot with LPRs and all the rest of it, there was some discussion about this only being for seven days, or three days, or, you know, something short of that. And so we've now landed on a correct number. Is that how we get to 14?
Yes, I believe we landed on the correct number of 14 days. After our research, at the time we were talking about this, we hadn't done sufficient research.
Okay.
And afterward, after that, then we landed on the 14 days.
Okay. And then how, how is this data different? Okay, um, and then how, how is this data different than LPR data?
If, if it's okay, I'll jump in there, we're still going through the contract for the LPR and the Flock cameras, and reviewing all of that, so, um, we, because it got so convoluted and kind of mixed up in the, in the, uh, work session, we chose to separate this out and bring the Flock camera and that information back at a later date.
Okay, so this is truly just the, truly just the corner?
Yes.
Cap traffic, not to be confused with the LPR, okay.
Can you just explain what LPR, just for the public?
Oh, uh, license plate reader.
Thank you.
Uh, which is the same as the Flock. So, w- we've been using those terms interchangeably, but now it's license plate reader and it's traffic camera. We have two kinds, okay. So, um, you said you, uh, researched other cities and how they're, how they're handling it. I know from the work that I've done in the state, it is all across the board, so, uh, kudos to you for being able to decipher that. What I was unclear of, I mean, it says it, but I'm not sure that it's entirely clear, is who authorizes the viewing of this? One of your slide bullets was, who's got viewing authority, and you said it's an engineering thing, but...
Yes, it would be, um, our city traffic engineer would be the one to make that determination.
So if a police officer comes in and says, I want to see the footage at the corner of Walk and Don't Walk?
The mechanism, so, great question, there's a mechanism for the request, and it would detail the uses specified, and as long as it was part of those uses, then we would, of course, turn that over.
Is there, and, so this is Big Brother, I, I did read when I was younger. So, how do we prohibit Big Brother abuse, either for a nefarious reason, for someone trying to track down a loved one, or an ex-loved one, versus?
And that's a great question, and that's, that's, uh, primarily one of the ma- main reasons for the policy, because of course, um, as I mentioned, there are public record requests are available for these. As far as acting as a city staff member, follow the policy, if you don't follow the policy, then it can be forced.
Could you hold it a second, I think DCM wants to say something here.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, Councilmember Stip and members of council. I think the clarification here is, we have a policy, and it's attached to this, we have a form that is actually included that needs to be filled out before, um, it can be used for anything other than traffic purposes, so if police department does want to capture footage or have access to the footage, there is a process in place, um, where it has an approval authority to be able to be, uh, pulled. So, that's how we would make sure that it's primarily used perfect, uh, first for just traffic engineering purposes, and if it's for any kind of enforcement purposes, there's a process to go through.
A- a- and I think that, that's the public's biggest concern, is what are we, what are we doing with this stuff that we're filming, and how do, so I want to talk about that in public, so everybody hears it. Um, you know, how we intend to keep it from turning into a Big Brother kind of scenario. Um, because it's a great, the end result, I think, will be very, very positive, but I just want to make sure that the public is assured that we have taken every step possible to make sure that we're not uh, allowing this to turn into an abusive kind of situation, so. Um, and then finally, the last question is kind of, as this should be, the, uh, these traffic cameras are kind of the cornerstone, if you will, of the real-time crime center. It's the view that we have going on, I'm going to say twenty-four seven, as that, as that center is being, is being stood up and activated, uh, et cetera. If engineering is the only one who is quote-unquote authorized to use it, and we have a real-time crime center which should be tied into this, talk, talk us through how that, how that is supposed to work.
Yet to be determined, because we haven't gone through the process to come back to council and talk about a real-time crime center, and how we'll use this information and what we'll use within the, the real-time crime center. So right now, this policy is just focused on the, the current purposes, and then we'll need to bring that back, um, before council, as we discuss a real-time crime center.
Okay, so that's really a phase two? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Agreed.
Okay. Um, then that, uh, answers any of the questions and concerns that I had, again, I just want to make sure that we got as much of this information out in the public. Um, we all read, you know, George Orwell, I shouldn't say we all did, but I know my age group we did, all read George Orwell, so we want to make sure that we've got, um, this information out there. It is, it is a really good, uh, tool for us to be able to use. And, uh, I'm supportive of it, I'm appreciative that we've got, um, you know, the, the legally appropriate use of the, of the information that, that's being recorded, um, and that it's out there, and we can't, you know, kind of deviate from that, so, thanks for all your work.
Councilmember Loretano?
Thank you, Councilmember Stip, for covering many of my points. I, I want to thank you for, um, bringing this policy forth. I think it's really important, my understanding from reading it, so that the public knows for the privacy concerns is it is only going to be public areas, correct?
Correct.
Um, so it's not going to be in private, oh, it's not going to be over your yard, it's not going to be, you know, down, you know, in your front yard or anything along those lines, these are the major intersections that you're going to see.
Correct, they, uh, focus on the right-of-way, public areas.
Okay, and, and just, um, so people know, there's no real Fourth Amendment right to privacy when you're out in the community, so we're making sure that we are not violating anybody's privacy right, we're not looking in their homes or anything along those lines, I want to be really clear about that, because I think some people misunderstood when we said cameras, what we were talking about, so. I do appreciate that, I appreciate the fact that the police will be able to get those. Um, I think that's very important, that's a very streamlined process, um, um, whatever forms or however you do it, by text or whatever, so if an officer needs it, they don't have to wait till Monday morning to get the traffic engineer, we got to make sure we have a very streamlined portion, because if they're looking for something along the way, you know, a car that has an Amber Alert or something along those lines, and it's in the city, uh, and you know, once we get the Flock cameras up, which is different for anybody listening, um, that is very important that we get that information to the police as quickly as possible. Um, I think the fourteen days is reasonable for any public records request, and obviously if there's a reason to hold it longer, we can always reexamine that when it goes live with the real-time crime center, so I think this is a really good thing, I think it'll bring public safety, and I think it'll give us an option, um, sometimes there's stuff no one's around, and it kind of, the, the camera doesn't really lie, the camera shows you what it shows you, so I, I do appreciate that, I think it's very helpful, so thank you.
Vice Mayor Cano?
I wanted to thank you, Steve, for separating the, the two types of camera projects and not bringing them back at the same time. Uh, there was a lot of conversation about this, and I, uh, I needed clarification, so I talked to Kenny Knutson this afternoon, just to help me sort it out with, what it was that this was doing and, and not doing, and so it was helpful. Um, as Councilmember Stip talked about this being a foundation toward the real-time crime center, um, will the thing, items we're purchasing, hardware, software, will that be compatible for what our future goals are?
Um, Vice Mayor Cano, I think the best way to answer that is, uh, these items we're purchasing are specifically for recording these cameras. Um, so i- it, it'll be compatible with this situation, which we interface with the police department, the future needs of the real-time crime center, I think, are, are still being investigated. Yes.
But this will be a tool that, that public safety can use as well?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, Vice, uh, Councilmember Gillis?
Um, I just want to make this really clear for the people, because I started this whole thing way back when, and the reason that I wanted it was for PD, it was for PD, I think we all remember that. It was to protect them, because there was nothing out there. When I went into the transportation room and saw all those cameras, I thought all those cameras did record, and I made a comment at the time about how great this is, Jimmy can just come in and get information. And I was told then by Hugh, no, he can't, none of them record, which was ridiculous to me. So I started that endeavor at that time. The people out there that are listening, this has nothing to do with trying to spy on people or do whatever, I think we need to make that perfectly clear, because there's a lot of talk about that. This is about PD and protecting them, and protecting the constituents, in case there's an accident, in case there's somebody, a, a drug run or something that somebody's catching, the cops are going after them. It protects the constituent at that, at that light, but it also protects the police officer, because my concern was there was no one protecting the police officer except for what they wear here. And so, that, for people that are out there listening to this, please understand that we're trying to protect you, but we're also trying to protect the police officer, it's that simple. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Hampton.
Yeah, lots already been said, so, no, I appreciate you bringing it forward, I think it'll be a great tool for our police officers, and, um, to, like I said, be a little safer. The real-time crime credit, crime center over in Glendale and Scottsdale is a, is a great tool that helps our police stay safer and understand what they're coming into when they show up at a location. So definitely a good step forward, um, for our, for our city, so, thank you.
I- there's not a whole lot to add, except to say, um, I'm looking forward to when you do the license plate readers. Um, I'd be, I, you know, I've been a big fan of that for years, even before they started becoming popular, because I think that's going to save lives, and that's going to give us part of the, you know, real-time crime center as well, so. Looking forward when that discussion comes up as well, so with that, can you go ahead and open it up? Passes six zero, thank you. Our nice, uh, item to consider is combining CIP projects relating to roadway, intersection, and traffic signals to improve along Yuma Road. Again, backup, just for the public, just introduce yourself and go ahead and kick it off.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, Steve Cento, city engineer, I also have Walt Kinsler, our CIP manager, with me here tonight, and, uh, presenting on the Yuma Road Canyon Trails to Cervel Avenue CIP project. So, so, um, as the mayor mentioned, come, we're requesting a combined projects, uh, a traffic signal and the roadway construction, but we're requesting a budget transfer to increase the project budget and expenditure authority to go ahead and construct the project. Go ahead and take a, a look at the screen, we have a, a quick recap of the project scope. Um, we're planning on building out, uh, the rest of Yuma Road from just west of Canyon Trails Boulevard to Cervel, including the south half, uh, and adding medians, a- and that'll result in three lanes in each direction, appropriate turning lanes, landscaping, and drainage for the roadway. Um, also, we're planning on constructing a traffic signal at one sixty-fifth Avenue and Yuma, which is the westernmost driveway, uh, for the Frye Shopping Center, so kind of in the center of the screen there. So just to go over the request summary, a little more detail, the current budget for the project is seven point seven million. We're requesting an additional three million for construction, about thirty-nine percent increase for a total of ten point seven million. Uh, should council, uh, approve tonight, we would start construction this week, and we would, uh, anticipate completion by March of twenty twenty-six. And to just dig a little deeper into the reasons for the requested increase, um, the primary impact, or about eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of the increase is due to increases in construction costs, similar to what we saw at the Pebble Creek and I-ten underpass project. Um, there, there are secondary impacts, much smaller, about thirteen percent, there was some additional Roosevelt Irrigation District infrastructure that needed to be relocated, that we discovered during design, and also there was some additional right-of-way expenses that came up during the acquisition to support the project. Uh, so again, we're requesting to combine the two CIP projects, we're requesting a budget transfer and expenditure authority to, uh, get started on construction of the project, and now I'm available for any questions.
Uh, any cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Sinon, council, please enter a motion in a second, authorize combining the CIP projects number forty-two, oh-three-seven, Yuma Rome Canyon Trails to Cervel, and CIP project four-two-zero-six-two, traffic signals, one sixty-fifth Avenue and Yuma, and to one project, CIP, four-two-oh-three-seven, and to approve a budget amendment of three million, and, uh, expenditures of construction funds up to nine million, two-hundred-thirteen-thousand, eight-hundred dollars for the combination of CIP projects, four-two-oh-three-seven, Yuma Road Canyon Trails to Cervel. Do I see a motion in a second? See what I have here, I have a motion and a second. With that, up first, Councilmember Hampton.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a very much needed, uh, project, and we've been talking about it for a while, so with a temporary road sidewalk in there, and I just want to understand the scope a little bit more, so, the ten point seven million, that's the, the light, uh, the, um, the median, is this the full build-out of that section of the road?
Councilmember Hampton? Yes, absolutely, it's the full build-out of Yuma Road, including the traffic signal at one sixty-fifth and, uh, Yuma from just west of Canyon Trails, so if you, see, there's, uh, a median, we're adding west of Canyon Trails Boulevard and some striping to tie into existing, uh, all the way to Cervel Avenue.
Would there, would, would there be a sidewalk on the neighborhood side?
Yes.
And a bike lane?
Yes.
There as well, okay, and is that Blue Area Retention Basin?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and that's city, is that city-owned there?
Correct, the city purchased that to support the drainage needs for the project.
Okay, no, that'll be good there, um, and then the light, is that in the ten point seven you said?
Yes.
Okay, and is there any shared costs with the, uh, development, the commercial center there, or the neighborhood? Or is that all on us?
No, I, I don't know all the history if we have an in-lu payment from them, but essentially, it's, if it was, it was so long ago that it's well under what it costs today.
Yeah, I'm just, just curious, there's any, recouping any, any cost there, like we do with some other neighborhoods?
There's not a cost recovery, but I certainly can follow up and get you if we have a, an in-lu payment that goes towards it.
Okay, yeah, okay, no, I, that'll be really good for the, uh, that shopping center, it's hard to get in and out of that shopping center, it's a very popular uh, place, having a light would be a lot safer, especially making a left-hand turn out of that, either side of that, the gas station side or that side, so. And then, I'm trying to think of anything else there. Yeah, it'll be good, it's safer for the, for the neighbors that are at, just south there in Vanderbilt Farms, I live just right there, that na- in the, in the neighborhood right over here, so, it'll be really nice, I use that, use that whole area pretty frequently. So, um, yeah, looking forward to that, and then, and then ADOT will take part of the east of, or the east, the west of that, of Canyon Trails, that'll be a little bit us and ADOT, right?
Correct.
Okay, and that, I don't know, for the timeline, do we have a timeline on when we're thinking that's going to be still?
Uh, we currently have a project planned in our five-year CIP to start design for that project next fiscal year. Um, ADOT, uh, currently, the plan is, loop through three, would start construction late twenty twenty-five and complete within a couple of years.
Okay, so it'll go two, two, down to one and one, up to, right now, so this is done, this, because the timeline is, this gets completed in March, oh, two years from now? This, this section will get completed in two years, okay. So, I'm just curious if it doesn't line up the timeframe of ADOT, it should, it'll bottleneck after our portion that we completed, correct?
This project will likely, the plan is to have it completed before ADOT's completed.
Yeah, so before ADOT gets completed, there'll be a bottleneck getting to Cotton from our nice new area here to, when you get, when you get to the Cotton Lane.
We're, um, planning on re-striping Yuma on the north side, so the westbound lanes will, will be three all the way to, uh, the intersection where it kind of diverts today, because there's no third lane west of Cotton.
Yeah.
The east side will still be one lane, and then it'll open up, um, if you can, uh, view the kind of, the westernmost portion of, of this project, it'll open up into three, heading into the east direction.
Okay, just understand the feel for the residents who are going to be down there, and, uh, we're doing our portion, but ADOT might, might take a little, potentially with whatever goes on with them, and how quick their timeline's going to be, how it'll full build-out for that section, so. No, thank you, I think it's very needed, we need to get more, uh, resources down south of the, south of the I-ten, um, for all the residents that are down there, so this is good, so thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
Thank you very much, um, I, my question, I want to confirm, there is a sidewalk that's going to go into that area and everything, so I thi- I think that's a good thing. Can we just make sure that we let those residents, because I believe a lot of those driveways go right, almost directly out onto the road? Can we just make sure that we work with them and, and see if they need any assistance, like blocking stuff off? Because I don't want people to get trapped in their houses and danger getting in and out, so I just appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Of course, thank you. Councilmember Stip?
This is, uh, I'm glad we're getting it started before I, before I leave council, because I've been talking to this, the folks in the neighborhood since I got elected, so. Um, I, I'm appreciative of that. We, we are seeing these, uh, very large increases in construction costs, and we're not the only ones that are experiencing it. A- as I've said before, I, the city of Scottsdale has been reworking their capital improvement plans in, in very significant ways, greater than, than we have been. in, in very significant ways, greater than, than we have been. So, um, w- we're not, we're not in this alone, however. Um, I think it does beg the question, have, have we appropriately adjusted all the rest of our CIP projects going forward? That we can anticipate, or we can properly work on the funding for this? You know, everything that we do is not free. So how, how are we working on that?
Absolutely, great question. Um, at this time of year, actually, we're going through the existing projects in the CIP that are funded for next year, updating those costs and future projects that come in, um, from the various owner departments for, uh, starting next year and the subsequent years. This project and the Pebble Creek project earlier this year, they happened to fall into kind of a, an area where we were under design, so we didn't have the ability to just pinpoint that number yet, um, so which is why we're coming mid-year for the increase.
Yeah, I, you know, it, we have always been very, very cautious and careful about what we've been spending and how we've been, how we've been, you know, looking at that, so, um, I'm fortunate, or, we are fortunate, and I'm appreciative of the staff's effort so that we are not in the same situation that many of the other cities are, that are looking at hundreds of millions of dollars of gap between what they're able to accomplish and what they thought they were going to be able to accomplish. Um, so I, I'm very appreciative of that. I just want to make sure we're pushing forward. And then the, uh, the difference in this funding is coming from where?
Phone friend?
This sack of money right here. My discretionary fund, is that where, is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, for the next twenty years. It's on.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Stip. So, um, this is going to be coming from unassigned fund balance? So as we're closing out fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, we're doing the financial statements as we speak. Uh, the anticipation is that revenues came in higher than we expected, and expenses are coming in a little bit lower than we expected. So we will have some undesignated fund balance that we can use for this purpose. Traditionally, in the last three years, about thirty million dollars is what we've, we've seen in unassigned fund balance. That balance is then used for future CIP items as we go through next year's budget. So, uh, this funding will come out of what would be used when we discuss, uh, the budget for next fiscal year.
As we do with all of our one-time funds, et cetera.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Again, I appreciate you moving this project forward. It is something that really needs down there, as, uh, Councilmember Hampton has mentioned. So with that, go ahead and, can you open it up? Passes six, zero, thank you very much. Uh, does council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events or requests for future items? We'll start down there first.
Um, I want to say that we went to the, um, we did the Halloween thing at the ballpark the other night, and it was really great. It was great. Uh, if Steve Lortano had not shown up in the ET outfit, I just don't think would have made my night, because it was that good. But anyway, the kids were great, everybody was great, and I always love doing that every year, so, great job, everybody. Really, really, and very well-planned. Gailene, I don't think she's here, but somebody tell her. Wonderful job. I love her. She does a great job with that.
Did you have something, uh, share?
Um, I just want to say, oh, I turned the mic on, I don't remember that.
Do I need to give you the directions?
Okay, um, today, and I think the mayor did this as well, went to, uh, Brazo Hospital, had the new DaVinci Five robot, and it is really, really cool. And we are only the second hospital in Arizona after the Mayo Clinic that has that. Um, so I, I believe you guys did better than I did on it, but I was just playing with little rubber bands. But it is just wonderful to see that equipment at the hospital, right here in Goodyear for our citizens.
Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, um, there was an event that happened a couple weeks back called West Fest, and it was their first annual thing over off Indian School in the three-oh-three, and there was over six thousand people there at that event. Um, they ran out of food. It was a, it was a really popular event I went to. Um, and then also went to a nonprofit for, or fundraiser for a nonprofit on Sunday. And then I talked to, went in already about this, but looking into our spitting ordinance, and we're getting a lot of worldwide attention apparently on that ordinance, so, so thank you. It's like a spitting ordinance that's twenty-five hundred dollars apparently to spit in Goodyear, and it's on all these, like, silly laws. Yeah. So we get, we get national recognition for having a silly law, so just looking into it.
So you're saying we have that going for us?
We got that going for it. We're popular, we got our name out there.
Yeah, the, uh, where we went today over at the, uh, hospital was awesome. I mean, the technology that they're using right now and the type of pinpoint, uh, for that, uh, robot that they had was awesome. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to put on the spot a shout-out to Janet out there, who was able to take the robot, because they had some exercises in there, and one of the exercises was to unwrap a Tootsie Roll. And she came really close to going in there and working the mechanics of that. And, uh, I think if you stuck with it a little longer, Janet, you would have got it. But, uh, anyway, the technology that's coming out of these hospitals now is just awesome, you know? And I'm just thinking, what is it going to look like five years from now? You know, uh, but no, that, and it's the second, it's only the second machine in the state. Mayo's got the first, and they have the first one who did. They was telling us some major surgery in that hospital dealing with that, so, uh, the tools now are, are off the charts. With that, city manager, you got anything for us?
I sure do, and yes, I've already checked into the spitting ordinance, so we'll be bringing that back. But, um, it was a busy weekend for Mayor and council. We had Make a Difference Day on Saturday. Um, the numbers are just, uh, blowing us away. We had thirteen projects this year, eight was last year. Uh, number of volunteers, we were right around three hundred volunteers. Last year was a little over two hundred, and the number of volunteer hours was twelve hundred hours this year, about eight hundred last year. So a lot of involvement from our residents on Make a Difference Day. And then, um, we did have the Fall Festival at the ballpark in the evening. Seventy-five hundred people attended that. Um, over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pieces of candy. One of the things that we did differently, and we have become, uh, certified in, in autistic center and all of that, the Parks and Recreation, we did have five of the fourteen booths where they, um, individuals could go who have sensitivities or allergies to candy or just the noises and things. So we, we designated spots for those in, uh, individuals. And just a, a shout-out to all of those, um, Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Lortano, Councilmember Gillis, and, uh, of course, we can't forget Steve, uh, for judging the, uh, costume, uh, parade, which is always a fun time, so thanks, everyone.
Is that it? All right, next meeting will be November fourth, twenty-twenty-four. With that, meeting's over.